All right. It is 2:03 PM on Tuesday, August 8th. This is our regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And Clerk Rodriguez is not here with us today. So JJ, can you please do roll call?
Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Nicolette.
Present.
President Smith.
Here.
Trustee Westlake.
Here.
Trustee Woodley.
Here.
Student Representative Deason. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. Okay. So, all right, we'll just wait for our few people to come in here into the audience. All right, so now we'll move on to item 1.03, our Pledge of Allegiance. And so, thanks to the leadership of our Chief Operating Officer, our children are fed, they safely get to school, and they are kept warm and dry. He's also another year wiser. So Adam Cersei, would you do us the honor of the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America. And do we agree by law for which it stands, one nation under God, in the legal, with liberties and justice for all?
All right, and so now we'll move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement, which we debuted in our last meeting. This is the Washoe County School District land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional home lands of the Washu, Washoe, Numu, Northern Paiute, Niwe, Western Shoshone, Nwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. All right, that closes Section 1, and we will move on to Section 2, our Consent Agenda items. And I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to pull any of today's consent agenda items? All right, seeing no lights on. JJ, do we have any public comment on items 2.02 and 2.03?
We do not.
All right. Colleagues, if there are no lights on or no questions for these items, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 and 2.03.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Vice President Nicolette, seconded by Trustee Mayberry. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries six to zero. All right, now we'll move on to Section 3, our items for presentation, discussion, and action. And we'll open today with item 3.01. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the design phase funding allocation towards the rebuild of E. Otis Vaughn Middle School in the amount of $5,200,000 as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Smith. For the record, Tammy Zimmerman, Chief Facilities Management Officer, here to bring the recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee for Vaughn Middle School rebuild. If you recall, back in December of 2022, you guys approved 3.5 million to start the design of that building and that site. And that got us from schematic design into design development. This $5.2 million ask is to get us from construction documents to construction administration and permitting and through those phases. The tentative schedule right now, we anticipate being done in November of 2023 with design. We anticipate bidding in the spring of 2024 and starting construction in June of 2024 with that. We will be back before this board again to ask for construction funding, and we anticipate coming in February of 2024 for that full funding approval. So we'll get to that as we go through capital funding and then bring it back to you guys. And with that, I have a flythrough of what we anticipate this building to look like. It is part, it looks like, a little bit like O'Brien. We took the parts, we split them apart a little bit to make them fit onto this property. And so, we'll start looking east at Yori, that's the existing building with the existing fields in it. This is the new building that we're starting to propose and working through design development. Left to right, gym, admin, and multipurpose room. We're going to swivel around to Vassar and look north. That is your multipurpose room on the corner. Electives such as bands, CTE will be in the middle there, along with your media center. The larger three-story is your classroom wing with your medium group spaces, your classrooms, your teacher collaboration spaces. You'll see there's a roadway that goes around that, that is bus drop-off for pickup and drop-off for your buses, so it'll have a secure perimeter around it though, behind the gates. This is looking west at the back, there is your field. We anticipate two softball fields over the top, you could play soccer and have a little bit of a track. So looking back, you can see your wings again. This is coming around to Bresson and looking, this would be where you're at the front of the school now, the existing school, so it's going to look a little different. Here's your gym on the corner of Bresson and Yori. So because, putting it there because of parking, so that they have access to that gym building. So we reconfigured it to work a lot better with the community and the way the property is set up. We have to relocate a cell tower at this one as well, so that's part of that, you'll see a cell tower in there. We have covered bike parking for riders who ride their bikes. This is the, looking west from the east side, there's homes on this side if you kind of picture that. And this is from Vassar, that is the community room, where possibly a family resource center. And making that entrance separate and accessible to families, not having to go into the front door was very important through this. So again, on the right is your multipurpose room with those beautiful windows. Administration is in the middle, is in the middle, because they run between multipurpose room and gym when it's after hours and that. And this is what we think the front door entrance would look like.
I absolutely love this moving illustration. And I think we also have a guest here that maybe helped make that happen. But that was so helpful for understanding the vision and the layout of the building and the way that it'll nestle within the community. I thought that was, I've never seen one of those before with one of these projects, so that's amazing.
We ask for those with most of our projects, just so that, because most people need to see it to understand it.
Diane Nicolette here. I do have a question. I keep coming across in discussions with principals and then our newer buildings, classrooms and electives. Programmatically, why do we separate them?
That elective portion is for the larger classrooms like music, band, orchestra, CTEs that take larger spaces, and so we call those electives. You could still do some electives in your standard classrooms, which are a standard size, but we need larger spaces for what we call the electives like that.
Just a couple of questions. So if I recall right, Vaughn was built when I was basically in diapers, 1956, if I recall. So this is wonderful, and I know we already voted on it. Can you just briefly discuss energy efficiency and, well, bonding, how we're going to do the bonding?
I'll leave the bonding up to Mr. Mathers. He does do all of that. As you can see in our CIP that you guys have approved, it is outlined in there, it's budgeted in there, and he does model that with our Bond Council to make sure that we have enough to do that. But whether he bonds for them and pay as you go, that we leave to Mr. Mathers to determine that. Your questions about energy efficiency, we're always looking at energy efficiencies and everything we do, we're looking at solar, what solar we could put up there and how that would work with it. Obviously, also the way the building faces, we're facing it west, the front door, which helps us to get that sun and all of that into those spaces. So that's part of the architecture component, and we think about those every day when we do projects.
And if I read right, the architecture's relayed that part time, that's to be determined.
So we're working through architecture, schematic design is part of architecture, design development. We have plans that we've started to meet about, decide where the classrooms are and that already. So we're just getting ready to actually do construction documents, which are biddable documents for contractors.
Okay, great, thank you. And I don't always say it, I'm kind of gruff, but thank you very much for all you do and all your responsiveness at all times, thanks.
Madam President, if I may, thank you. Alex Woodley for the record. Ms. Zimmerman, I have a question, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but do you know if entities that have used the fields that exist there now, would they still have the ability to use these new fields? Because I'm sure once the community's aware of this new field, there's probably going to be a lot of interest.
We've been working with the city of Reno specifically on those fields to make sure that it is what the community needs as well as what the school needs. So that's why you'll see two softball fields, because it is used by Sierra Girls softball right now. And then it can be used for the PE and the facilities for a track around that. So we're looking at multi-use, and we've worked with them to make sure that it meets the community needs as well.
Thank you.
I love that. You should share that sentiment, Vice President Nicolette. I agree.
I would be happy to. This is very exciting. And facilities and everyone that you work with, vendors, contractors, we are a top-notch organization, Washoe County School District, when it comes to our schools, whether it's renew, rebuild, repaint, whatever. Amazing, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Vaughn is in President Smith's district, it's also in my district, hasn't that large district? So yeah, I'm very interested and just delighted to see that we continue to make progress on it. I had just come on when O'Brien was kind of wrapping up, so I never quite understood the, I know it's a rebuild, but can you clarify how that translates to no disruptions? I mean, you're not closing the school down for a year, right? Are you using maybe some shell of it? Go ahead.
So we, with this project, we hired a construction manager at risk, who is Clerk and Sullivan, to help us keep the existing facility in operation while we construct this on the other side of the property. So it is a campus flop, just like O'Brien, but we took those parts and pieces and information from the educational specifications to put it on the property, so we could still do school while we construct this and be constructing on the other side. And we'll deal with safety precautions and all of their issues that happen on an active campus, but that's part of why we have a construction manager at risk, is to help us have that communication and understanding all the way through the project.
So the field, existing field now, is largely where much of the school, the new school will be?
Correct.
Gotcha. And I was curious about the cell tower. Is that a revenue-producing utility for the district?
It is a revenue-producing for the district.
Does that go to the school?
It does not go to the school, it goes to fund devices at our schools, the tech-rich devices for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. So this is super exciting for me. I attended Vaughn, and I was a little bit, you know, it's hard to have something that has such fond memories, see it changed, but this does so much justice to that neighborhood and for, to have a middle school of that quality like that, it's absolutely beautiful. And in seeing the pictures, I was also a little concerned, because there was like 10 parking spots when I went to Vaughn, and everybody just parked all over the streets, which was, I'm sure, a nightmare for the homeowners there. So this is really, really nice to see that we've taken into consideration the neighborhood's comfort. And also, I really hope we keep softball there. I played softball there many years at Vaughn, and it's just an excellent area, excellent area. Thank you.
Tammy has always great job. I just want to say, I don't have the long connection and history to Vaughn that some here have, but Vaughn was one of the very first schools I visited last summer when I first arrived as superintendent, because summer school was there. And I'm no facilities expert, but I knew then, after one walkthrough, that this school could not be repaired, it really needed to be replaced. And so, I just want to publicly, again, thank the trustees for moving this forward, Tammy, the team, and everyone for all the good work. I saw Mandy, the principal, the other day, and she was over the moon about seeing these renderings, so it's very exciting, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. I echo everyone's thoughts. A couple of things to add is I view Vaughn, this is a dream for our children, and it's realized, and it's absolutely amazing. Just like Dr. Enfield, the very first time I went into Vaughn, I left that building, I sat in my car, and I made a phone call. And so, just saying, what is it that we can do? And I love to see all the talent, the community coming together, our vendors, our partners, for, again, this dream for our children, which will come to pass. And it's also exciting, because this project kicks off our facilities modernization plan. This is the first project to come out of that process. More to come in future meetings and months and community conversations, but it should be noted that this was born from the facilities modernization plan. So, great job, very exciting for this to be our start. Seeing no other lights on, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Roger Edwards.
Hi, Mr. Edwards. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I don't, I'm not up here to speak about a brand-new building that doesn't have improved curriculum for our students. Now, I'm a 50-year resident of the neighborhood, and I know you guys all watch the television, read, listen to the radio and everything else. And across the country, parents are coming alive about the quality of education. And once again, nowhere on this agenda is there a quality of education item for discussion. Everybody knows our students are struggling. We cannot get mired down in this ESL, all the other abbreviations for nonsense curriculum, when our students are being graduated without abilities to do well in public. Now, I think that's a great-looking proposal for Vaughn, that school's, I played softball in those fields for many years, my grandkids did, are right now playing. But that's not important. Even if you had to stick with Vaughn and you had to improve the curriculum, it would be worthwhile. You can't be graduating students that are not ready to compete in the real world. And that's what's going on, unfortunately. Can't do math, barely do English, they don't even get history anymore, they can't sign a check. I don't know, do they even understand how our country works? Are they taught anything about that? As opposed to being taught about gender recognition and so forth? This school could be left alone if you approved the quality of education. That's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pablo Navaduran.
Hi, Mr. Navaduran, welcome.
Good morning, guys. So I saw the Vaughn Middle School, I did not attend the Capital Funding Protection meeting, but I saw their agenda, I saw Vaughn, oh, this is much beautiful, they have a lot of parks, but I thought, because of their land, so they have not much land as O'Brien did, but if you look at Vaughn Middle School, the new building, they have new parks, that's amazing. Look like they've done a good job for, they've done a good job for all their team to make this school a reality. We know the, we know like, we know Vaughn have a major behavior problem, as you know, I get it, so, but build new Vaughn Middle School, I think what will change school culture as it is. As it is, so I like to keep in mind that the game, the game rival, is we do have a game rival at Vaughn Middle School as of right now, unfortunately, so this agenda should be taken care of it until possible, so this, but focus on the approval of design of new Vaughn Middle School. I think this should be amazing, it should be approved, and this will likely to be next home for the newer area community students, so here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Navaduran.
That's all I have for this item.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts? All right.
Quick one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, I was kind of looking over when we voted for WC1 or didn't vote for WC1, which is basically what helps fund the building of the schools. It was stated in there that the WC1 money would be used for schools, that a much better school environment helps improve quality of education, which is kind of what Roger spoke about. And so I just want to hope that the two are tied together, I guess that's the best way to say it. Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Thank you, Trustee Church and President Smith. I think what I would say is, we can all agree that a learning environment that has natural light and no crumbling walls and a high-quality, high-functioning HVAC system certainly lends itself to a more conducive learning environment. That alone, however, does not guarantee outstanding teaching and learning. That comes from the incredible individuals that inhabit that place. And so we will continue, as we invest in these buildings, to invest in our staff, to make sure that they have the tools and the supports to invest in our students, so that they all graduate prepared for the future of their choice. These are not mutually exclusive, they are all interrelated, and we'll maintain that commitment moving forward.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll go ahead and move that we approved the design phase funding allocation of 5.2 million toward the rebuild of Vaughn Middle Schools, recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
All right, motion by Trustee Mayberry, seconded by Trustee Westlake, seeing no lights on for further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you so much, and thank you so much, Mr. Kemner, for being here as well. All right, so that closes item 3.12 and brings us on to item 3.02, the follow-up presentation for the Human Resources, also known as HR, assessment completed to identify the strengths, gaps, and opportunities for improvement as it relates to the Washoe County School District's Human Resources Department and its current functions. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we welcome our Chief Talent Officer, Dr. Christina Mason.
Thank you. Dr. Mason, may I, before you begin?
Please.
President Smith, if I may, I do want to acknowledge to the trustees that you did not receive this presentation in advance as you normally would, and that is because, as you will see from this presentation, it is completely revamped from presentations you've seen before. The team has been working very hard on making sure that all of our presentations integrate our strategic plan goals and priorities, so that we, so that people understand that our plan is a living thing, it's not just some words on paper on a shelf. And so, you got it at the last minute, I apologize for that, will be better moving forward, but I just wanted to give you that bit of context. And with that, I will turn it over to the brilliant Dr. Mason.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield. For the record, Dr. Christina Mason, very proud Chief Talent Officer of the Washoe County School District. We are the heart of Washoe County. So since our time together last, JJ, this is not quite working, do I? It says it's on, so, all right, great. So since our last time together, as you all know, thank you for your leadership with the strategic plan and adopting our promise, knowing our students by name, strength, and need, so that they graduate for a future that they choose. In addition, our pillars are listed here, but most importantly, this idea of safety and belonging that really encapsulates those pillars. We'll be focusing today's conversation in the pillar four, culture of excellence and accountability. As you quite remember, February through April was a very busy time for the Human Resources Division. Through a partnership with the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy, we did a very, very in-depth, deep dive into our operations, policies, procedures related to human capital, specifically recruiting, retaining employees, in addition to our benefits functions, our labor relations functions, our functions relative to supporting employees and employee assistance. So all of those pieces were put together, for all of those pieces of data that we could find and that we had were put together for review. We wanted to find our areas of opportunity. We also wanted to find those areas where we had an opportunity to grow. And so, we delivered that information to you all towards the end of April, early May, and you did receive the report that had the 41 recommendations that came out of that. Another piece that kind of came to mind very loud and clear as we were receiving that feedback, is that we weren't as efficient or effective as we had hoped to be. Lots of reasons why, but also, we needed to include our stakeholder voice and feedback loops more readily and appropriately, so that we were getting good information from those who use our services, so all of our employees and our care, and that we were turning those recommendations and feedback around in a timely way and being actionable with it, which led to our second realization, we're not very data-rich, unfortunately. We utilize a system right now that is extremely limited. In addition, it does not speak very well, if you will, from using a tech term, to our backend business systems. And so Chief Mathers and I have been having some very serious conversations about that, because as you all know, he too has limitations within his system. So what this equates to, as we revisit these objectives, when we look specifically at that third bullet, efficacy and efficiency, we're doing a lot of hand tallying, which will bring me to our numbers today that I just had pulled at noon, because staffing is, of course, top of mind, is what we're doing. Back to the assessment, so the methodology that we used was looking at both qualitative and quantitative data. We led lots on Uh, we led lots and lots of focus groups. They were led by the Urban Schools, again, Human Capital Academy. We wanted all of our stakeholders to feel free to just express their true experiences, to express their frustrations, their ahas, their areas of like, yes, they're doing a great job in this. And so, um, those, uh, none of the HR, uh, talent team were actually involved in those focus groups. We wanted them to be very authentic. But then we did run as many reports as we possibly could around retention, pipeline, uh, professional pla- pathways and how we're helping people onboard into our system, um, and had those things also, um, evaluated. Now to the recommendations. I talked about two huge ahas for us. We're not as efficient and we don't have really great data. In addition, however, there were some other, um, high-ranking and prioritized items that came up. I have them here, um, and so I'll be reading them from my laptop. Um, we talked about the upgrading the HRMS. It is critical to our success. We spend hours and hours and hours of manpower at this point checking, double-checking spreadsheets. Uh, because our system does not have the backend functionality to talk back and forth with business and to really update real-time in our system. Uh, we also needed to, uh, one of the other priorities that came up was to better identify and clarify roles in the Human Resources Department. How are they in service to schools? Whom do we call for what? Um, at some point, those lines got blurred. And so we look at this as an opportunity to be responsive to feedback and are undergoing conversations with, uh, Dr. Enfield and Dr. Kio around how we would reorganize our department specifically in service to teaching, learning, and leadership's organizational, uh, revision. We'll be looking at establishing what is called an HR partner. This was the third highest priority. Uh, the HR partner role aligns specifically with our new area superintendents. The, uh, excuse me, um, associate chiefs, no longer area superintendents, uh, with our associate chiefs because they provide pipeline, uh, information to schools and schools in an area. So as the associate chief is supporting schools, when it comes to human capital, planning, strategy, recruitment, and employee services needs, that HR partner will, would be the one-stop shop. Currently, all of our techs are very, um, siloed in that these particular people do benefits, these particular people process new paperwork, these particular people. It's, it's the nature of our system. But working with Human Capital Academy and working with our associate chiefs and Dr. Parks and his leadership, we've been having these collegial conversations over the last three months so that we can align those services so that it's more fluid, so that one person is the point of contact for an area superintendent, uh, associate chief, excuse me, um, and their area and the principals and schools that that associate chief serves. So again, we're not, we're, we're trying to work smarter and collaboratively. And as we iterate our sys- our department differently, um, we are iterating in service to our strategic plan and elevating instructional leadership and support above all else. One of the other pieces that was, this is now our fifth kind of recommendation, um, that was top of mind for us and highly prioritized was one, spending time paying attention to branding and updating our imprint on these website and in social media. Um, because we have an amazing community that we live in and we need to have that represented from the time someone even thinks they want to come to Washoe County, um, and, and, and have that represented in our social presence. So updating our webpage is important. And then also, uh, been working very closely to understand how we can reshape our recruitment efforts and help to set some measurable goals, helping schools and department chiefs set measurable goals on what their recruitment plans are, what their visions for recruitment are, and how they are establishing them, their, their, uh, departments and schools as institutions that, that help support that retention, right? We can bring them to you, but we have to keep them and wrap around to ensure that our staff have not only upwardly mobile opportunities from where they are, um, but also that they feel connected um, to their school and to the missions of their schools and departments. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. So we've been busy. Uh, there has been no grass growing. As you may have noticed, I am the Chief Talent Officer, uh, at now having the Office of Talent and Professional Growth Systems in her care. So we have officially launched the new title of our department, TPGS for short. And, uh, we're very excited about that and the new opportunities that provides. Um, I have to give shout-outs to two colleagues, um, Chief Rombardo and, uh, Chief Parks. Uh, there's no space between us, I think, as Dr. Enfield would, would say, but we have formalized the legal roundtable meetings. We meet weekly. Um, and teaching, learning, and leadership, we also meet weekly. The reason being is because our work is so interconnected. And so instead of sending the email, we have decided and, and, and agreed as chiefs that this time is pristine, it is precious, and that we will use it to make sure that we are collaborating with our teams and that we are making collaborative decisions that elevate the teaching, learning, and leadership. Um, we have now designed, launched, and have successfully used our electronic, uh, universal hiring requisition. Um, I am, I'd like to give a huge shout-out to the team and talent that spent a lot of time doing that. Um, it really streamlines and helps make more readily available the work that we're doing with hiring. Additionally, we have launched the pooled postings. So one of the nuances of human resources is that, you know, the, the, in the health of an organization sometimes can be assumed or reflected by how many positions are available. Well, we know in education, there are myriad reasons why we would have multiple postings. The challenge with those multiple postings is that if I'm a third-grade teacher, um, at, say, Peanut Butter and Jelly Elementary, and I ha- don't quite have a posting yet, or I know that there's one coming, I can't see any qualified applicants. I can't, I can't, uh, pull from a different pool or tap someone to say, hey, are you interested, um, if they're in a different pool? Additionally, because of the way that our system is, the limitations on our, our system, um, principals weren't able to see the applicants that really truly were interested potentially in, in serving in their buildings. And so with these pooled postings, it pulls all of the pools together. Uh, our employees and applicants to our system are still able to prioritize their regions or schools that they would prefer, but the pool posting provides a re- readily available, um, pool of applicants for, um, a position. So instead of third grade at school A, B, C, D, and E posting each, they submit their requisition and it goes into the pool. And so there's a healthy, robust, um, greater number of candidates available.
Um, Dr. Mason, on that, so I, I very much like the idea of, you know, having it and so that all the different, um, hiring managers can see that. But can you just clarify? Do the applicants also see exactly the schools? Because we know that some people may be interested in working in a close-by neighborhood school.
Yes, ma'am.
So are they still able to see which schools have those positions available?
Yes, and there's what, what, what Jim Grace continues to correct me. It's called a preference page. But there is a preference page in the application that allows, uh, applicants to, to preference location based on open requisitions or schools that have positions and location, geographic location.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Um, we have, we totally had a great time revamping our Education Appreciation Week. Um, that falls in the care of TBG, TPGS. And we also launched our partnership with Teach for America, expanding our, um, recruitment for teachers, qualified teachers coming to us nationwide. So we're really excited about that.
I'm gonna jump in on that one again. So the Teach for America is really exciting. Do we have Teach for America educators in the district this year?
Yes, we do.
Could we pause on that and just talk a little bit more? Cause that's big news.
It's huge.
Yes, I'm not burying the lead because there's a lot here, but, um, that is worth pausing on.
It's absolutely exciting.
May I, President Smith? So, um, Dr. Mason has definitely taken the lead. When I, uh, arrived last July, I think we all recall that we had a pretty significant triple-digit teacher shortage, uh, facing us just a couple of weeks before school. And, um, I felt I had the responsibility to explore every single strategy available to us to make an improvement because I made a public pledge here in this chair last year that we would be in a better place this year than we were last year at this time. One of those strategies was to reach out to Sean Parker for TFA Nevada, uh, who's located down in Clark to say, you know, we'd like to explore a partnership. Um, and so we do have, I believe, is it about half a dozen?
There are actually three that ended up coming.
Three that ended up coming. We hope to grow that. Um, and we are excited, though, to have the partnership in place. I think because TFA has not had a presence here, the word hasn't spread among TFA about how awesome we are. But once they find out, word will spread, and I am confident that we will have more, um, folks. We are also actually, we have a number of TFA alums who are leaders within our system. Dr. Kio being one of them. And we've talked about harnessing them to not only provide support to these new members of our team, but also to continue to get the word out that this is a great place to live, work, and lead. So thank you, Dr. Mason, for following through on that. We look forward to welcoming them.
Yes, we're very excited to have them. And all of those three placements are actually at Pine right now as a cohort. Um, and so we're really excited to be able to support them all. All right, continue on. Moving into this summer, we have expanded our fingerprint capacity. Um, we, as you all know, that there were, there were limitations, um, to how many employees we could fingerprint and get processed. And so we've been able to expand that. Um, department-wide, we have upgraded all of our technology so that our, um, uh, HR technicians and partners are mobile. They're not tied to a desk because then they're able to go out into schools and to support. They're able to go out and meet with principals and have real data available to them. Um, so it's a way for us to be more responsive. Um, additionally, we have recreated and relaunched the WC, what we call the WCSD Welcome. And basically it is in-person orientation and onboarding. And I have to give a shout-out to, uh, Katie Louise Weir, our Director of TPGS, uh, of TPGS, excuse me, um, and her team for really just grabbing that and running with it. They have done a fantastic job. And actually, all of the TPGS team are now involved as we rotate everyone through an opportunity to greet our new family members in, in, in face-to-face orientation. We have, uh, launched the zero-day benefits for new hires. No more waiting. We're very proud of that and excited for that. Um, in addition, we welcome the Equity and Diversity Team to the talent and professional growth space. Um, we are excited to work with Ms. Battle and her team. We've already started onboarding. We've already started visioning and starting to align the work to our new strategic plan. And so we'll have an update for you there as well. And in addition, we're getting ready to launch a new logo. I'd like to draw your attention to a variation of it there because we are the heart of Washoe County. We are the first, uh, department that is touched by interest of a community member to serve with us. And we are the last department to help them on their journey when they exit. So we take that very, very seriously. So we're in the midst, I'm starting from the bottom up. I don't know why I was doing that, but we're in the midst of negotiations right now. Um, I spent, um, part of my morning in very productive conversations with our chief negotiator. Um, we also are looking at the HR partner role and we'll have, um, uh, that finalized here in the next couple of weeks of what that new iteration will look like. Um, and in addition to, um, the, our orientation experience, we have a kind of, uh, huddle, I like to call them, so that we can get feedback from the people that have just been going through our welcome so that we can continuously improve. Um, and again, with the reorganization, making sure it's not only aligned to the strategic plan, but continues to elevate teaching, learning, and leadership and instructional leadership at the core of that, okay? And how we provide our supports. Now, before we get to this slide, I would be remiss in my position if I did not offer a real-time update on where we are with staffing. So this is going to be at the 25,000-foot level, um, but I think it's very exciting. Um, I have found through conversation and research that typically we have had in the past, uh, you know, four to 600 vacancies to fill at this point in the year. Um, I'm very, very excited. Now, keeping in mind, this number fluctuates, changes all of the time. Uh, since 10:00 AM, we have had seven new positions posted because we are moving at the speed of light. This is what we eat, sleep, and breathe, literally, maybe I'd say 20 hours each day. Um, but right now, we have about 148 site-based postings that are still open. Many of those are in various stages of process. What this means for us is as we track that and we continue to look, we're looking at between 50 and 60 vacancies potentially. That's it, to start the school year. Now, of which, we are having, mm, mm, every morning, uh, Chief Parks and I huddle, uh, the team in my care, the team in his care, which includes all the associate chiefs, 7:00 AM. We jump on the line and we are comparing our internal documents based on real-time internal conversations happening with school principals. We are filling those positions by connecting the pieces in that meeting and then setting the course for that day of how we, we have the schools, um, prioritized. The associate chiefs have helped us. And so we are working through those lists and we are comparing those notes multiple times a day. So when I tell you we wake up together and we're the last team that we talk to before we go to bed at night, I am very serious about that. But we do it with joy because we know it's going to make the difference for kids to start the school year um, with a teacher that is, that is there to, to help them grow and learn. When we look at our transportation, again, shout-out to my colleague, Chief Circe. We are looking at starting the school year with our bus routes running. We are doing it. So that is a huge celebration. Um, we are continuing to work with Nutrition Services and Housekeeping to fill those positions as well. Now, I have questions or discussion?
So I just want to thank Dr. Mason and the team for their diligence on this. Uh, they are up every day at 7:00 doing their huddle. Um, I just want to point out, just for people watching who may be a little bit confused, Dr. Mason used the number 148 current postings.
Postings, yes.
But they are in various stages of being filled. So we anticipate out of that that come next week, we will have a vacancy rate of approximately 50 to 60 versus what we were looking at last year that was about 200. Um, so we're getting there. We're getting there. Um, it's, it's a work in progress, but we're making progress. And the fact that we will not have to, um, use our hub rotation system, I know that that pained the trustees, it pained me last year that we were not able to provide daily transportation. So I want to thank Scott Lee, Adam Circe, and everyone in HR that we will be able to deliver on that this year. So the headline is we are in much better shape than we were a year ago, and we know that we can continue to do better, and we will.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dr. Mason. Um, Trustee Mayberry, I see your light on. Um, I do have a question
Yes.
as it relates to the reorg. Um, so this all sounds really wonderful, and I liked how you put on one of the very first slides, uh, the, the fifth slide, I guess, about the operational efficacy and efficiency. So we have all of our talent right now in the group. Is there, are you working on a reorg in terms of reviewing departments' functionalities? Like where we have all of our talented staff members? And then does that come back to this board so that we see the overall reorg of it? So I'm just trying to make sure that I map out where the signaling is and then what comes back to the board for another time. Because of course, we're not talking about reducing, um, any of these positions. We're talking about remapping their talent, what it is that they're doing. So can you just expand on that? I realize I-
I can.
Okay, thank you for understanding where I was going with that.
No problem. Um, so what we are looking at is just what you said. Looking at what the needs are based on those 41 recommendations that came back. And again, you all have those 41 recommendations from, uh, when we presented in May. Um, and those, uh, have been prioritized. And that prioritization process looked at effort, it looked at complexity, and it looked at impact. So if we were to make this change, what would be the impact to schools? What would be the impact to the- What would be the impact to the hiring managers, right, if we did or did not make this change? Additionally, when we start thinking about the HR partner role, we have some very talented technicians, but that includes some cross-training for them and just restructuring how they go about doing their work. In some cases, it's not necessarily doing it at the computer here, they might need to be mobile and doing that work side-by-side with a principal, with an associate chief, right? And that's because it's about delivery of service in addition. So we took all of that feedback. One of my mantras, I think, in the department is "feedback is a gift." And so I think everybody can actually finish my sentence when I start that now. But it is, because that's how we iterate forward indifferently. So when we think about how do we integrate more meaningfully our Equity and Diversity Team and how they are deployed into schools, we're looking at positioning them in the direct supervision of TPGS, so, oh, excuse me, not supervision, direct partnership, excuse me, with PGS and Katie Weir's side of the house, because that's where the professional learning happens, that's where the professional growth happens, that's where we're getting a lot of requests from school principals and departments to help them shape what that looks like for them. So it doesn't make sense for it to lay on the talent side of the house, it makes sense for them to be repositioned within our organization in partnership with that side of the house, the school supports is what we're calling it. And so those are the kinds of moves that we're thinking about. With some of those moves, we're finding where we are missing potentially some opportunity with staffing, but those requests, as approved through the superintendent, will come as they're supposed to through that process of the reorg.
Trustee Mayberry, followed by Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few comments and questions, pretty rudimentary, nothing really difficult. I do want to thank Dr. Enfield, though, I do remember, gosh, it seems like yesterday, about this time last year, and that's what you said, you were already focused on the next school year. And indeed, you've gotten us there, so I want to applaud your leadership and your dedication and your hard work and your team. So that hasn't gotten unnoticed, so thank you for that. You mentioned updating the website, is it the webpage or-
Our district, our department district web page, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, no, that, yeah, it is a bit antiquated. So that's, I think, the whole webpage at some point might ought to be updated, but that's another discussion.
Okay.
I got tea, I'm at that point in my life now where I should have bifocals.
Me too, yeah.
Fighting.
It's real.
I want to thank you and the superintendent and all those that are involved with celebrating our staff throughout the year. I think it's inspiring and amazing what we do, particularly in an era where there's so much attack on public education, where there's an element that's constantly trying to tear us down. I know that because the teachers and the staff tell me that, so it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you for celebrating our staff and this organization for lifting us up. I think that's really important.
Our pleasure.
The fingerprints.
Yes.
At one point, well, I think, is there still a fee associated with that?
There is still a fee associated, but we did take the recommendation to waive that fee for employees, our ESP employees mainly, that are at a certain income bracket-
Okay.
-to absorb that as a way.
So if you're at a certain income bracket, you don't have to pay that fee?
Right, correct.
Okay. Has there been further discussions about lifting that fee completely?
We're working towards that, yes.
Fair enough. Yeah, I noticed a Channel 2 story yesterday, it was a really good story, you and Dr. Enfield were interviewed. I was going to ask you about the vacancies, you've touched on that a little bit. I am curious, what has been some of the hardest position or positions to fill in this organization? Therapist, or what would it be?
That's a great question, thank you for asking it. And I think I will say that by and large, our special education positions-
Okay.
And that is not, that is unfortunately where education is across the country. Like, when I talk to my colleagues across the country in similarly-sized urban districts, we're all having the same conversations about that scarcity. And so we are, in the PGS side of the house, the PGS and school support side of the house, we're really trying to think outside of the box about how we can expand that and pipelines and pathways for people who express interest in being a schoolteacher or coming to work for us in a different capacity. So I would say that is absolute top of mind. Additionally, where we have seen some very interesting flux has been within the realm of our AAs and our EAs. Those positions, again, it is a compensation question in some cases.
Can you define those two acronyms?
Yes, Administrative Assistance, so school-based, and EAs, Executive Assistance for Department Leadership. Those positions tend to have a great deal of flux, we're finding, because of salary compensation, I don't know how else to say it. And so that has been tough. We continue to work with the operations team on nutrition workers and housekeeping. Also, math and science teachers for the secondary level has been a challenge, simply because they're a hot commodity, and everybody wants them. So they really do have an advantage in that respect, in that those math and science positions in secondary are, when we get someone who's interested, it's really helpful if we can get them onboarded as soon as possible. So I would say those would be the most frequent positions that we're recruiting for. And then, of course, I don't want to leave out the bus drivers, and you're already very well-aware of the police officers and how, you know, Chief Chivino has been advocating for the addition of those officers, so I hope that answered your query.
How about speech therapist?
Currently, right now, we are not short on speech therapists. But I would say that any classification of specialized instruction, right, so special education, speech pathology, psychology, those type, counseling, those types of, we just have to be able to act very quickly when we find quality candidates, and so far, we're not behind the eight ball. So far, we're doing okay.
I appreciate the comments on the news, too, where you said, you know, we're not just looking for anybody, I mean, they have to be qualified and, you know, meet the standards and well-trained. So thank you for that, thank you for humoring me, Madam President.
I will do that any day of the week.
I just, because I know that our Chief Communications Officer, Michelle Anderson, is here, and she gave me the look, so I want to make sure that I say publicly that we know that we have work to do on our website in total, but we, Michelle has arranged to make sure that our front landing page is revamped and much easier to navigate, because we want our families and public to be able to get onto the website and know where to go. It's a work in progress, but it will be starting this fall, and I wanted to put that out there.
Amen.
Excellent. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Mason, I just want to express my gratitude for your enthusiasm, really appreciate that, and it seems to be contagious, so that's really good to know, especially coming from HR. So I have one question, one comment. My question is, as it relates to HR partner, do I understand it correctly? Because sometimes, when you work in a certain field, you don't come in contact that much with HR, it's like I'm talking from my own personal experience. Sometimes when I would make contact, it feels like I'm talking to a stranger all over again. So is the intent for the HR partner to actually address that and provide some-
Continuity, yes, yes, absolutely, yes. Thank you for the question, Trustee Woodley. So the HR partner would currently be like our HR technicians, it's just that instead of being very focused on one piece of supporting schools or a principal, they become more of a partner when it comes to all of the needs that come up, when it comes to talent and the procurement of talent and the recruitment of talent, helping principals understand and articulate their recruitment vision, identifying the strengths and the areas of opportunity for the people on their team, and then not only setting a plan in place to, that we can help usher as the HR partner, but then helping with all of the typical HR questions and inquiries that come, right? So, when do I get my benefits? What do I fill out? Do I have the right form? Like, all of those things are so important to the people on our teams, and so we want to make sure that they have a one-stop shop, for really lack of a better term, and that person can then liaise with some key staff here if there are deeper, more intimate needs or more involved needs. But that HR partner really becomes a consultant to the principal and to the department about how to shape that recruitment vision, how to execute, you know, here's what we can help support you do, right?
Right, awesome.
And I could go on forever, you saw I got excited.
I appreciate that, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Thank you, on behalf of the employees as well, thank you. And then, my last comment, I really appreciate the idea of the daily huddle and just how it really impresses upon everyone that's how important it is for you. So I really appreciate that, because sometimes you really do need that face-to-face, even if it's every day. There's a reason why public safety has daily briefings, you know? So have that face-to-face, it's important, transfer of information, so thank you very much for that. I think I really appreciate that personal touch to that, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank my partner in crime, Chief Parks, too.
Thank you, President Smith. Dr. Christina, I just, I want to say that your personality is like sunshine, we are so lucky to have you, what an asset. Can you tell us where are we at with aides? Because I know a lot of teachers, when I visit schools, they're like, you know, "I haven't had an aide, I haven't had any help." Where are we at with that in the district? And if we're running short, what's kind of our plan to get more of those little guys?
Yes, let me see here. Currently, we are processing 132 ESP applications, so we are bringing them on home. And I had, forgive me, I had to look at my phone because I had real-time data delivered at 12:00, so I wanted to make sure. Absolutely, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I do have some questions on that HR, let me go back to my screen.
Okay.
That HR person that you mentioned. So it's not a supervisory position, it's a technician position?
Yes, sir.
Will they be under talent acquisition or-
They'll stay in our department, so they'll be under the umbrella of TPGS and more focused towards the school support side of the house.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll opine, we've had some emails back and forth offline, so hopefully we can meet and sit down, and we've talked before, but I'll harp on recruiting and retention, that's my background, that's my, one of my main focuses. Dr. Enfield's probably very tired of me bringing it up every meeting that we have, but I just think it's so important that we do it and do it well. I think we've made major, major improvements over the two years that I've been on the board, so we are making progress. And as Dr. Enfield and I have said, at least I've said to her, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but housing, supportive housing, maybe one of those pillars, maybe one of the pillars of that stool to help recruit. And so I'm just begging for research, not asking that we do it, I'm just begging for research on that one leg of the stool, housing and making people happy, because you basically don't hire the individual, you hire the family.
Right.
And you want them to feel welcome in the community, you want them to, housing's the last thing they want to have to worry about-
Right.
...when they're moving from out of state, and unlike many communities, many of our applicants, correct if I'm wrong, but many of them are coming from out of the area.
We have our fair share, yes.
So, pontificated enough, I think, thank you for letting me do that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Church.
Thank you, President Smith, and Dr. Mason, thank you. I appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation, I appreciate the real-time data as well at your fingertips and how hard everyone upstairs and everywhere across the organization is working. I do want to just say that the, you know, recruitment and retention is never a check-the-box we're done. That is on, it's a, it has to be, you know, what I call a gentle pressure relentlessly applied on ourselves, that we're always looking at ways to improve recruitment and improve retention. And I do believe strongly that it is, it's a multifaceted solution. So clearly, I think we can all agree that providing healthcare day one is a big thing. We know that we are in negotiations right now and that we've made compensation for all of our staff a priority, we know compensation matters. We also know working conditions matter. We know that, for example, a teacher will stay in a school with a great principal, even over more money. Not that they don't still need and deserve the money, I want to be clear, not trying to get out of more money. But, and so the work that we're doing to provide through our increased associate chiefs and refining their role to really support our principals and creating a culture in every one of our schools where staff are supported and have the tools they need to succeed, that's all about recruitment and retention. And I will also say this, and I know that people may be skeptical on this if they haven't lived it, but having a clear and strong strategic plan that is grounded in a promise that is as real and bold as ours is, attracts people to your organization. People want to know who they're working for, more importantly, they want to know what you stand for.
Yes.
And what we are saying in the Washoe County School District, unapologetically and with great pride and hope, is that we stand for knowing every student by name, strength, and need, so they graduate prepared for the future they choose. And, Dr. Dai, we do that in partnership with our families and community. So I just, I think it's important that people see that this is, we're taking a holistic approach to recruitment and retention, we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, thank you, President Smith. I'm very excited about the onboarding concept, that truly is, and then onboarding moves into the sustainability, retention, it's not a one-and-done, and I really appreciate that moving forward in that mindset, thank you for that. I really appreciate that you're helping principals, because I know this through discussions, deep discussions with our principals who are working very hard, especially this time of year, and then to look at hiring. And it's not what you went to school to do, you know, and you maybe took one HR class because you needed to, to graduate. And so I'm really so happy to hear that you are providing that support to our building leaders, thank you for that. And I'm going to tell you what I really look forward to. You use the term on Slide 7, you use the term "providing exceptional service to our schools." I'm going to really look forward to the qualitative and quantitative data so that through the months and years, we can build that we are doing this and what that means. So I'm going to be asking that question next time.
Please do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, this was a great discussion, some very valuable information, and this was just very, very insightful, and I know that our community was also interested in some of these answers as well. So thank you so much, Dr. Mason, and her sidekick, sitting right behind her by my eyes view, Dr. Parks, so thank you. All right, oh, yes, absolutely, we can never forget our chief legal counsel, Rombardo. All right, well, that closes Item 3.02. We're going to hold on Item 3.03 because our principals are in preparations, and they'll be joining us in just a bit. So we're going to hold on Item 3.03 and open Section 4. Our student representative had to leave, so she looks forward to giving her first report in our very next meeting, and so we look forward to hearing that from Arabell. So we'll go ahead and move past Item 4.01 and actually go to Item 4.02, our board reports. And so we'll actually go through Section 4 before we return back to the other items, just so everyone knows in the public, the Section 5 will still wait till the very end. That is not one section that we ever move up, that always stays at the very end of the meeting. So on that note, I know this is a little bit sooner than we're used to, but we're going to go ahead and move on to board reports, if everyone can get their bearings ready for that. All right, we're going to get all sorts of fun, and we'll go ahead and we'll start with Trustee Colleen Westlake.
Thank you, President Smith. So not a lot going on the last few weeks, but it's going to get a little bit more exciting and a little bit more hectic, which I'm actually looking forward to. But I did attend to amazing events that I got so much out of it, just even relaxation techniques, which for a type A personality, we're always looking for that. The new educator luncheon yesterday was amazing, so exciting to see new faces that are going to be joining our team, and you can feel there- to be joining our team, and you can feel their excitement and wanting to be part of the district, and I think that is just awesome. The speaker was amazing, Coach Rudy, what an amazing individual, and you can definitely tell he has a love for children, a love for people in general. I mean, he just, he exudes it, so that was awesome. And then I attended the leadership summit up at TMCC, that also was a fantastic event. Just first class, the speaker, Dr. Enfield Chi, am I pronouncing?
Yes, Chi Kim.
Yes, Chi Kim, she, I got to sit at the table with her, and again, these individuals that I'm getting to meet, just that I wouldn't have the opportunity to meet if I wasn't a trustee, so I'm so appreciative of that, but just, she's a breath of fresh air, she has amazing relaxation techniques that I have already put into practice a number of times since the leadership summit. So that's it so far, I'm really looking forward to getting back to school visits.
Thank you. All right, trustee Church, you're up next.
Thank you. Han, Hot August Nights was a good success, no, no issues. I should get JJ pictures of all my stuff. I had two police cars at the Atlantis, I actually did a little unofficial recruiting, handed out a lot of those sticky stars to the kids, let them play in the cars, et cetera, which most people are like, don't touch my car. I'm like, oh, no, no, they can sit in there and take pictures. So that was a great event. And next thing, I attended in Las Vegas, the National Safe Schools Conference along with Dr. Nicolet. It was an incredible conference, learned a lot, some of it's a little depressing about violence in the schools and gangs and everything, but I'd love to see some kind of a gang presentation be put on here, both for staff as well as for the community. And probably the number one speaker that we really, really need to have is on social media and how the kids use it, abuse it, keep it from their parents, how parents need to be aware of what their kids are doing. A lot of it's tied into teen suicide and teen violence and trafficking and all that, it's all tied together and really, really an important, when you just sit there with your mouth open, listening to this speaker. So I'd love to have that speaker or somebody come talk to the community as well as us about that. I haven't had a town hall yet in my two and a half years, hoping to get one on, we're trying to finalize the dates, it could be as soon as September 11th or 13th, so as soon as we finalize that, I hope to get that information out. And next on the list, I did attend the Swope Middle School tour, that was great. Also, last week, I put out information on our Sback scores that had come out in an email. I didn't see the part that said, please don't put that out, so once I saw that, I didn't put it out anymore, but mea culpa for putting that out in advance of the, and Sback is basically our testing scores, but mea culpa that I didn't see that in the email in the one sentence, so mea culpa. Also, I helped organize, in a very minor part on my part, but they're organizing a homeless conference, it's the statewide homeless conference, last year was in Las Vegas, this year's at UNR in Reno, and of course, we have a lot of in transition or homeless children, so it definitely affects the school district. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend this year, but it's there, and I bet many of our staff could if they want to, if they're not yet aware of it, they could attend that. So that's basically, and I got, how many seconds, 25 seconds left, but I don't really have anything else, I just should have got my police car pictures, but I'll try and get those up next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you could always bring them for next time, too. All right, trustee Woodley.
All right, well, mine will be nowhere near as long as my last previous trustees. I was out of the country for a couple of weeks, and I'm just getting back and playing catch up. So hopefully, once school starts, we'll start getting our calendars filled up. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, well, I wish I was out of the country for the last couple of weeks. But no, I was here in the promised land. Spent a, spent a fun summer, gosh, I don't know where it went, but we really haven't had reports since, I think, June, right? Yeah, so I did have a chance to visit one of our summer school sites earlier this summer at Bohatch Elementary with one of our supervisors of the summer program, Beth Martin, so I appreciate that opportunity. Beth, I think is one of the deans of one of our schools. And along those lines, I think there was a media event that the district put on, a mad science program at Brown Elementary. Brown's also in my district, and I met with teacher Courtney Graylow. She put on this, this science program during the summer season, and she told me she'd rather be there than with, she'd rather be with her students than home this summer. So just, it's a testament to the dedication of our many teachers. Also had a chance at two of the dean's future scholars program, along with Vice President Nicolet and President Smith. I will yield my time if one of you are going to dive into that a little bit deeper, I'll allow you to do that. Appreciate attending the new teachers luncheon yesterday as well, I had to depart before Coach Rudy took over, but, you know, duty calls, so, but thank you for that invite. And I also want to give a shout out to Jessica Isted, if I'm hopefully pronouncing Jessica's last name correctly, she's a teacher at Reed High School, and she was recently awarded the Nevada History Teacher of the Year by the Nevada Department of Education. So Jessica, if you're listening, congratulations to you. That concludes my report, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I will expand on Coach Rudy did an awesome job of bringing together the importance of social emotional learning and academics and how they do tie together. But I digress, I want to spend a little time on sharing information, if you could, thank you very much, JJ. One of the, I attended seven sessions at the same conference trustee Church attended, and one was very riveting, and it was the same gentleman, Mr. Cranford, who also talked about social media, and I agree, I would love to bring him or someone like him to speak to our students, our teachers, our families, and our community, because these are all community efforts, it's not just for the public school to solve. But the one I'm speaking of is I went to Making a Difference for Student Mental Health, that was one of them, Comprehensive Proactive Management Strategies, Implementing Components for School Safety Ecosystem, Best Practices for K-12 Emergency Management, Social Media Youth Threats and Solutions, and then Vaping Marijuana and Fentanyl, Displaying the Myths. So you see here, this, this just was a jaw dropper. I would say there were probably 60 to 70% of the attendees were in some kind of paramilitary, if you will, police, FBI, those kinds of professions, also school counselors, truancy officers, school police, was a wonderful mix. And when this, when this slide was presented by Mr. Cranford, the gasps in the room were noticeable. Vaping aerosol composition, basically there are 84 elements that are possible in a vape aerosol composition, 84 different. Now you can see some of these, I'm sorry, it's kind of small, but none of those are good for you.
No, they are safe.
Okay? Yeah, none of those are good for you, so it's really very jaw dropping. And the reason I am bringing this up is because, again, I cannot say this enough, it is going to take a community who cares about our students, students of every age, whether they're in school, whether they're at a baseball game, whether they're at the mall, to help them understand and we must take care of them. Next slide, please. This is where our most precious gifts hide their vape, their dabs, if you will. Looks like a spray can that they might have in their backpack, looks like a brush that they might have in their backpack. We must all be aware of this if we're going to help our youth, they need us to do this. We need to do this because when they come to school, they need to be ready to learn, and if they're in the bathroom, or if they're getting off the bus and they go in the back of the school real quick, all ages.
Totally agree.
Yes, we need to be aware. One more, one more slide, one more, I'm sorry, I know I'm breaking the rules.
Okay. I can't, I can't though.
No, you can't.
No, I'm sorry, but we can definitely hear more in the next one.
Can we just leave this slide up?
While we transfer over to me, and then I, we would love to hear more about that one for your next board report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for understanding. All right, okay, that is me. So as trustee Mayberry said, it's been quite a while since our last board report, so I'd like to first also offer my congratulations to Jessica Isted of Reed High School for being named the Nevada History Teacher of the Year. That is a sincere and tremendous recognition, and so proud that one of our W CSD teachers is being recognized in that way. So next up is I have a fun fact for the community, and that is that one of our school police officers is also an elephant who hears hooves. And I, yes, so my family joined the families of Clerk Rodriguez, trustee Mayberry, and trustee Woodley to see Officer Michael Rapasora of our own Washoe County School District Police Department, he was in the starring role of Horton in the next photo, in Seussical the Musical, put on by the Reno Little Theater as part of Art Town. And this is just a small example of all the things that our team members do in the summertime, and it was just really wonderful to see him. So he's there in the center, and he did a fantastic job. For the next photo, Vice President Nicolet, trustee Mayberry, and I visited the dean's future scholars program at UNR, boy, is this program off the charts. So it's currently led by Dr. Mariluz Garcia, the program's been in place for 23 years, and it has a 96% high school graduation rate. So in the sixth grade, at select Title I middle schools, students are identified and supported through middle school, high school, college, even into adulthood. Families are supported, students are supported, and it is truly incredible, the work that they do. This is a homegrown program made here in Washoe County that has touched thousands of lives and changed the trajectories of those lives, and it was a deeply impactful day, and it was so wonderful to share that with both of you. I also appeared on the Sparks of Interest podcast, which is hosted by one of our W CSD employees, I had never done a podcast before, but that was super fun, so that was my own summer program, something fun that I did. I spoke last week at the Washoe County School District Leadership Summit, which was a wonderful program, welcoming back all of our school leaders. And then I also spoke yesterday at our new education luncheon, which many of my colleagues have talked about, that was really a fantastic event, and we were so excited for all of that palpable energy in the room for all of our new educators. And I wanted to share with everyone that I'm looking forward to the all staff kickoff tomorrow, and then to let everyone in the community know that we have our back to school expo at the Reno Town Mall on Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00 o'clock, so again, that's at the Reno Town Hall. And then in my last seconds, I have a present. I have a present for all of my trustees and the superintendent, you are all getting garlic from the Jessie Beck School Garden. Our children raise this garlic, they feed our community with it, they sold it at the Garlic Festival, I bought a whole bag of it, and you're all getting garlic. Thanks to Jessie Beck, thank you. And you really are getting garlic.
Good thing we're not vampires.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, so yes, I will be passing the garlic out at the next break. Okay, so that closes out item 4.02 for board reports, and now we'll go on to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
I'll bring the gum and breath mints next time, if you're going to bring the garlic, so thank you very much, President Smith, and thank you for speaking at our Leadership Academy. So last week, we welcomed back our leaders from across the district for what was a really, I think, high impact couple of days, as trustee Westlake mentioned, we had Chi Kim from the Pure Edge Foundation come to really lead us in what the science of stress is on the body and how we can help recognize and manage that, because we, you know, we care about our children, we care about our staff, we want everybody to be healthy and well. And so I want to thank everyone for their participation, and Dr. Parks and his team for working across departments to design those two days, so thank you, Dr. Parks. Today, however, we welcome back our teachers. They're back. So we're so excited to see many of our teachers and staff in our buildings soon, and as President Smith mentioned, tomorrow, we will have our first ever almost all staff kickoff. And I'll explain why I'm saying it that way. So I have some pretty profound perfectionism issues, which as a leader is certainly not helpful. However, I really push myself to not allow the perfect to be the enemy of the good. And as we prepare to launch our new strategic plan and launch a new school year, I felt it was the right time for us to bring our staff together. And we did this, we haven't done it before, so we've done the best we can. Unfortunately, given the timing this day and the cost, we couldn't bring our off contract, so our folks who aren't on contract yet, we didn't have the budget, and I certainly am not, would never ask someone to come without being paid, although they are all very welcome to be there. So I want to be clear that we will be live streaming, and this in no way is saying that any certain employee group is more important than the other, every single person who works across the Washoe County School District is valued and appreciated, I know, by the trustees and by me. And so I just want to say that, that we are looking forward to seeing everybody who will be there tomorrow, and that for those who cannot be there, I want to promise, and again, I don't make promises from the seat that I don't, that I can't keep, we're looking next year at timing this event differently to ensure that all staff members can truly be there. So this is the first iteration, we're going to get better next year and even better the year after that, so just be patient, but we are excited to celebrate our staff and our students tomorrow, and I look forward to seeing everybody there. As President Smith mentioned, we do have our back to school expo on Saturday from 8:00 to noon at the Washoe County Health Department, so encourage families, especially those who may be new to our district and community to come. You can learn about all things Washoe County School District that you need in order to make sure your students, your children have a strong start to the new school year. And then next Monday, that's it, we're welcoming the kids back for the 2023-24 school year. I will begin the day around 6:00 AM at Nutrition Services, then visit some schools, including a bus ride with some of our new Jay Wood Raw Elementary students. And I know trustees will be out and about bills as well, but we are so excited to welcome our students back into our buildings. And just a note as well, that this is the majority of our students. On the 21st, we will welcome back our students in Incline Village, we are excited for that, and our kindergartners, nothing better than walking into a kindergarten classroom. And so I just want to thank all of the staff who are working so hard to make sure that we have a strong start to the school year. I will end with also my gratitude and appreciation to everybody who is devoting their time to the negotiations process. We have a lot of people working very hard to get to yes and get to yes we will. We just need to iron out those details, so I will name that tomorrow at the kickoff so that people know that our commitment to landing solid agreements that honor our staff across the board is strong, and that we will get there as soon as humanly possible. So thank you, everybody, and here's to a great start to the 23-24 school year.
I just had a question, can we put on the record two, I had 30 seconds left? The Jay Wood Raw, as the superintendent mentioned, groundbreaking 10:00 AM this Thursday, it's our new South Reno Elementary School, so wanted to get that out.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, JJ, so upon some legal guidance, here's how we're going to do the next section. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to open item 5.01, and so let me explain this before we do it, because we know we have some people here. So I will open it, maintain that item 5.01 stays open until after we do the next item, and then anybody else who still comes, we will still close with that at the end of the meeting, but it gives people the opportunity to do their public comment now. So again, that item will stay open, and we will reopen it again at the end, so anyone else who comes is more than welcome to join. But if we have anybody now, we can go ahead and open item 5.01 for anyone who's here.
Roger Edwards.
Hi again, Mr. Edwards, thank you so much for being here.
Good afternoon, Roger Edwards for the record, 50-year resident, kids, grandkids, and my first great-grandkid last month, so not that I didn't feel old enough already. Anyway, you guys touched on so much stuff, and you flew through a bunch of But anyway, uh, you guys touched on so much stuff and you flew through a bunch of, uh, military-type abbreviations, which I should have got, but I don't have the background for them, so some problems. But anyway, you get a, this new teacher, um, conference, was that online? I mean, is, can the public see that stuff, how it went? No, yeah. How about, uh, the community meetings are like a thing of the past. Trustee Church touched on them, but, uh, I'd like to really request we get back to doing that. You know, this is no, uh, format for the public to do squat. You know, uh, meeting out in the, in the picnic area in some park works really well. So I hope we can get back to that. Um, and, uh, Saturday, eight to 12, Reno Town Mall. What is that exactly? And is that gonna be published? About getting your meetings and events out, uh, is there any way we can do this better than just putting it on your website? Can we send it someplace, you know, that the public would see it all the time? Really, public would like to be involved, some of us. Most of us don't, but we got an empty room. But, uh, if we could try to get the public announcements out better, I think I would really appreciate it. And I, I couldn't write down the abbreviations, guy couldn't hear them. But, uh, Dr. Mason put on a great presentation. So anyway, you know, getting teachers is always a problem everywhere, not just here. But we can't have a history of, of fights and problems with our students and, and expect to get new teachers. That scares me off. It scares off residents for crying out loud. It certainly would scare off new teachers. And new teachers are so critical. If you need to focus on quality of education, you can't do that without teachers. You need quality teachers to have a quality, uh, uh, you know, uh, format for your, your students. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Um, I can also share that, um, all of the families in the school district received the invitation to the back-to-school expo. It's from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 at the Reno Town Mall. There'll be information from all of our school departments and also vaccinations available. And then we also put out a media alert, so everyone in the community is familiar.
I'm gonna, where, I thought the location was the, was the health, the Washoe County Health Department. So what, what is the location, Michelle? There's some confusion here. I want to make sure the right information is getting out there.
There we go. Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications, Communication Officer. It's at the Washoe County, uh, complex over there on, uh, North Wells. Um, and the health district were partnering with them so families can have their, uh, vaccines for back-to-school, uh, should they need them. Thank you.
That is amazing. And so that's separate from the back-to-school expo, right?
It is all in the same location so that families have a one-stop shop if they wanted to get the vaccines. And then they also wanted to get information, uh, for back-to-school.
Wonderful.
So it's not at the town mall?
No.
It, okay, I think, all right.
That's why I wanted some clarification.
Excellent. See, thank you so much, Mr. Edwards.
Pablo Navaduran.
Hi, Mr. Navaduran.
Good morning. Um, my name is Pablo Navaduran. And I want to, uh, speak about the 2023-24 school year, this kickoff. So pressure school is on Monday, August 14th. And, um, it's, we're working so hard to study for the pre-see test. I know this is a hard test, so hopefully I go pass it. So, um, so, and, uh, and, uh, I want to talk about the, the gang rivals. So I never imagined, never heard that before. Uh, we cannot control everything, so I got no solution for them. So, you know, what, here's what the coverage, what the best, what they can do for the community as a puts. And, um, we know the, I heard some, uh, um, some, uh, Adam Cece told me that, uh, moving to New World to Von, that created gang rivals. So I say, I, I got no solutes for, for them, so no solution for how you get along with teachers. So hopefully in the future, it's, you know how to solve problem right now, so it's in the futures. And so, so let's get, get back to work and go back to school and, uh, and then back to school day. Yay.
Thank you, Mr. Navaduran.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay. And just as a reminder to everyone, if any of our other community members, uh, appear between now, I will be reopening this item so that there will still be the opportunity to continue on item 5.01. All right. So it is 3:37. We're gonna go ahead and take a brief recess as we welcome our principals and get ready to reopen item 3.03. So we'll be taking a brief break. Thank you so much.
All right. It is 3:58 PM and I'm going to again call to order this meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees on August 8th. And I'm going to go back to one of the items that we had moved past in open item 3.03. This is the presentation to introduce new school principals to the Board of Trustees and the community. This is an item for presentation only, but it is one I look forward to every year. And we have the one and only Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Troy Parks and his Associate Chiefs. Take it away.
See how good they already are?
I'm pretty sure they're clapping for you, President Smith. Thank you, good afternoon. For the record, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer. Thank you Superintendent Enfield and Board of Trustees for this opportunity. As you mentioned, this is kind of our tradition to kick off the year, that time of the year where for educators, it's starting to get real. So I am extremely honored today to introduce our new crop of principals. We did have a little bit of a delay, so we're going to go in a little bit different order. I am officially calling this bumper crop of new principals Blackjack because there is exactly 21 of them here today. Each of them, as you might expect, will be the aces at their school as far as leadership. We are extremely proud and as you're well aware, the Office of Teaching, Learning and Leadership, HR and Talent, the entire district is here to support them. So we are going to get started with Area 2 first this time, a little delay in the order. So I want to bring up our new Associate Chief, Sarah Cunningham, who's going to introduce her new principals.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. I am so excited to be here and I'm very, very proud to be alongside some amazing individuals who will be leading our schools in Area 2. And I'd like to start with the new principal at Donner Springs Elementary School, Mary Riggs. Welcome, Mary. I don't know, come on up. We're all new here, so we're going to make this up as we go. And next, we're going to go with, just because we're in order, so it's outside of that, Dr. Kristin Amy Gilkinson at Libby Booth Elementary School.
Welcome.
And next, we have Melissa Chavez at Roger Corbett Elementary School. And after spending half a year as interim principal, she's returning full-time as our principal at Poliquitos, we have Chantel Lee at Poliquitos. Area 2. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. Thank you so much. And just so everyone knows, we are going to take a big photo at the end after we introduce all the principals. We're going to take a photo with the board as part of welcoming you. Thank you so much.
See that you move one piece and then they get confused because 3 is up next. I did want to make sure I said thank you and thank you for allowing us to take this item at 4 o'clock as many of them are especially aware there's very important professional learning going on in our schools. And the first day back for teachers, you want to make sure you're there to support them and help them and make sure that you get off to a positive start. So next up, we have Area 3 and this is also a new Associate Chief. Please welcome Denise DeFrain.
Welcome, Associate Chief DeFrain. And welcome to the role.
Hi, thank you. I'm very excited to be here today and I'm even more excited to introduce my new principals. I'm so excited to work with such talent. So first, we have Christina Martin at Mamie Toll's new principal. We also have at Grace Warner, Jeff Miller, come on up. And we also have Amanda Schlatter, who is not here at this time. I think she's working on some stuff back in her building, but if she comes in, I will introduce her. So I'm thrilled to introduce these great leaders into our school.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Good afternoon Superintendent Enfield, members of the Board, President Smith. I am Mike Paul, Area 2. See, I'm one of the... See, I'm not one of the new ones. I'm the old guard. I was about to say the wrong one. So Associate Chief for Elementary Education. I am very excited to introduce two new principals in my area. So first of all, we have Melissa Sullivan from Agnes Riesley. So very happy to have Melissa with us. She was a longtime Washoe County teacher and then she defected to Las Vegas for a couple of years and now we have her back, so it's very nice to have her back.
It was a study abroad period.
Yeah. So and then also we have with us, we have Stacy Black, a new principal from Gerlach. We appreciate the commute to come, Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
And so next, I would like to welcome Melinda Baker, Associate Chief from Secondary.
Welcome, Associate Chief Baker. Also new to the role, newish, newish.
Newish, I had three months of, kind of, maybe one and a half, maybe, felt like three. So first, I'd like to say I have, I believe, Area 5 has the most new principals. And what I am most proud of already is that these are a group of folks who lead from both their heart and their head. So I'm very proud for these well-rounded group of individuals. And we are going to start with Principal Anne Redd of Pine Middle School. And next, we have Ms. Jody Prudential of Pacola School. Next, all the way from Incline Middle School is the wonderful Dan Lettierd. And taking the helm at Dipoli Middle School, we have Kendra Smith. And we have the wonderful Carrie McDonald, Washoe-inspired. Thank you guys for being here and we wish you the warmest, most rigorous start that is built with self-care and balance. You know how I roll. Thank you very much.
Words to live by. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
And now Associate Chief Lauren Ford.
Welcome, Associate Chief Lauren.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to introduce you to my Area 6 principals, our new principals. I have Jill Bayless at Sky Ranch Middle School. Jamie Bowers at O'Brien Middle School. Claudia Basset at Turning Point. And Tomas Macalusa at North Valleys High School. Thank you.
Congratulations. We are so happy to have you.
And now I'd like to introduce Tiffany McMaster.
All right, Associate Chief McMaster.
Doctor Enfield, thank you so much for this opportunity. It is my absolute pleasure to announce the next two principals. I love being around people that inspire me as a leader and I'm so, so grateful to be working with these two new individuals. First of all, Sarah Peterson will be joining us at Sparks Middle School. And Tristan McElhaney may not be a new principal to our district, but he is certainly new to Hug High School.
Congratulations. We're so lucky to have you.
Thank you both. Looking forward to working with you. We're going to do incredible things.
Yes, we are. All right, is that everybody?
And last but not least, the incredible Donna Angotti.
Okay, I thought we had one more. I thought we had more. Associate Chief Angotti.
Thank you. Sorry we went out of order. So I am proud to introduce, I only have one new principal in my area, Michelle Will. And I had a chance to see her in action today with her staff. The excitement level was tremendous. They were excited to get back for the school year, so welcome Michelle Will to our principal at Settle.
Hi, Michelle, welcome. So we're going to do a big photo. Michelle and Jeff, do you want us out front or do you think we'll all fit right here? All right, let's come on up, Associate Chiefs and new principals. All right. Thank you all so much. All right, I'm going to have the trustees come back to their seats and we're going to put everything back together. Okay. We are just about done. All right, everybody.
Hi, Stacy. See you in a couple weeks.
Associate Chief McMaster or Dr. Parks, could we shut the door so we can keep the excitement? Oh, and then there's Principal Schlatter. We're going to do one more. A positive start to being a new principal. Associate Chief DeFrain.
Yes, so Amanda Schlatter from Bernice Mathis. You got your own? Well, welcome. So yes.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you. All right. Well, that closes item 3.03 and I think we're going to go ahead and close the door too. Thank you. That was a very fun celebration. Celebrating our children, celebrating our team is always something that we're very honored to be able to do. So by closing item 3.03, that also closes Section 3. So I'm going to reopen the continued item, which was item 5.01 and we'll continue with any public comment from anyone who may have come between the first opportunity and now. JJ, do we have any new public comment?
I have no new cards, but the Board received emails from Veronica Koppel and Maggie Bab.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing as there's no more public comment, I will go ahead and close that item and then announce that our next meeting is on August 22nd, 2023. And at 4:16, everybody. I call this meeting closed. Thank you so much. We're joined.